Um, Dr. Rex.
Actually, out of ten point zero one is student and staff mask. On July thirty one, twenty twenty one, the statewide mask mandate for schools was lifted for North Carolina with the expiration of Executive Order two twenty. The decision on whether or not to require a mask for students and staff now resides with the local Board of Education. The most recent release of the North Carolina Strong Schools Toolkit includes that schools should require all children and staff uh in schools to wear face covers consistently when indoors. There's also a standing CDC order that requires passengers and staff of public transportation to wear masks. Therefore, masks would still be required on school buses for staff and students based on the CDC order. Today I'm going to share four options with the board to review and consider as it relates to student and staff masks for the rebuilding of school. Once I share these options, I'm going to ask Nurse Lanier if she'll come forward and share a couple of updates that the Strong Schools Toolkit has listed for the board to hear those as well. So Option A would be masks would be required for all students and staff regardless of their vaccination status. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. Specific guidelines would be developed to govern masking COVID nineteen protocols for athletics. North Carolina High School Athletic Association is not dictating those or leaving those up to local districts. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus. This option would be reviewed on a monthly basis. Option B, masks would be required for all students and staff unless they have been fully vaccinated. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. Again, specific guidelines for athletes will be developed because those will not be coming from the NCHS AA. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus, and this option would be reviewed on a monthly basis. Option C, masks would be strongly encouraged for students but not required. Staff would be required to wear masks unless they have been fully vaccinated. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus. And Option D, masks would be strongly encouraged for students and staff but not required. However, all students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus. So I'll pause here for a moment before Nurse Lanier comes forward.
Three, Option A, one more time.
Option A, masks would be required for all students and staff regardless of their vaccination status. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. Specific guidelines would have to be developed to govern masking COVID nineteen protocols for athletes because the House Athletic Association is not uh producing those at this time for districts. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus, and then this option would be reviewed on a monthly basis. So um, any more questions before Nurse Lanier comes and shares?
Yeah, how are you gonna do with somebody here?
I see, that will be something that we would have to determine. If if the board went in that direction in terms of vaccination status, because some folks do have a card, folks do get those at different places. I know the health department tracks those, but I'm not sure that if they get through a private provider or if it's done through like one of the pharmacies, I'm not sure, Nurse Lanier, you may could tell us, does that report back to a state system or about immunizations?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I would like to know if I'm vaccinated. I mean, I, I mean, that's their right to be private, though, I guess.
Yeah, I would think that would be a personal thing.
Yeah, I know it is, but I say I'd like to know, I'm not asking.
Right.
I just like to know. He's not vaccinated. You know.
Yes, sir.
Can I, before we-
Apparently it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or not. People apparently who are vaccinated are getting the virus and spreading the virus. People who are not vaccinated are getting the virus and spreading the virus. I'm not, I'm not a doctor.
Dr. Rex.
I'm glad of it.
Dr. Rex, on D, you said it was strongly recommended for teachers and students, correct?
Exactly.
But uh, in addition to that, it's like, like the other three, it is required on the bus.
That is correct. There's a standing CDC order that governs public transportation that requires anyone on public transportation to wear a mask.
This is just me, but um, could we, because it happened to me, well, it wouldn't matter with the other three, but on this one, could we also add possibly, um, if the board were to look at it, if they deem that way in the hallways when changing class?
We could do that, just, and I just gave these as possible options, obviously.
Right.
You all have any combination that you all would would like to make?
Well, thank you.
Mr. Duncan, we have data on we have masks, like, if people passing along, we have masks, we have a data on that.
On that, I don't, Nurse Lanier, do you all have anything in terms of, I know a lot of us is fairly new with the Delta variant, unless folks that are testing positive, that have had the vaccine, but uh, there hasn't been anything to share with me currently, I don't know if Nurse Lanier knows has any data on that or not?
Uh, I do know that a study uh done by Duke University for North Carolina DHHS um, did, they collected data from all schools participating in Plan A. So Bladen County was part of that data collection, Miss Brown and I participated. And that um, data proved that with consistent masking um, that people who were exposed to COVID nineteen, less than one percent will test positive with consistent masking.
How about social distancing? Was that in included in that? Because we know we're barely socially distanced at all.
Um, well, I do have some points, a very, and I'll say the best before the end, but I think it will help answer some of your questions.
Okay.
Um, and I know that you probably have read the updated guidance from July twenty ninth. Uh, I'm just going to review um, some of the key points and some of the current public health guidance. And I also have a statement um, for Doctor, from Doctor Duncan, our Health Director. Um, so after months of decline, North Carolina is experiencing a rapid increase in COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations among those who are unvaccinated. The Delta variant, which is now the predominant strain of COVID nineteen virus in North Carolina, is significantly more contagious than the original virus. While the original virus spread from one person to an average of two to three people, the Delta variant is spreading from one person to an average of six people. Therefore, unvaccinated people are at greater risk of catching and spreading COVID nineteen, and they pose a risk to children under twelve who cannot be vaccinated and those who are immunocompromised. Getting vaccinated is the most effective way to prevent serious illness, hospitalizations, and death, and slow community spread. Rigorous clinical trials among thousands of people ages twelve and older have proven that vaccines are safe and effective. Currently in Bladen County, we have a percent positive rate of sixteen point nine, which has us in the red category, which is level of very high community transmission. Um, on July ninth, the CDC issued updated guidance, updated guidance for COVID nineteen prevention in K through twelve schools. Key takeaways, and we have spoken about this all evening, students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to in-person instruction in the fall of twenty twenty one is a priority. Vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID nineteen pandemic. And um, I will answer on behalf of myself, I am fully vaccinated. Um, Bladen County Health Department will provide vaccines for ages twelve and older uh during our open houses for our middle and high school students, staff, and parents, anyone age twelve and older may get a COVID vaccine um, at the middle and high school open houses. Um, with rapidly accelerating viral transmission and the increased contagiousness of the Delta variant, on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, CDC updated the guidance to include recommendations for universal indoor masking for all teachers, students, and staff and visitors to K through twelve schools regardless of vaccination status. So they changed that from um, the unvaccinated wearing masks to everyone now regardless of vaccination status. Additionally, on July nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the American Academy of Pediatrics, AAP, released current updated guidance for schools. The AAP recommendations include all eligible individuals should receive the COVID nineteen vaccine. All students older than two years and all school staff should wear face mask at school unless medical or developmental conditions prohibit use. The AAP also recommends universal masking in school at this time for the following reasons. A significant portion of student population is not eligible for vaccination. And we all know that's everyone under the age of twelve. Uh, protection of unvaccinated students from COVID nineteen and to reduce transmission. Um, lack of a system to monitor vaccine status among students, teachers, and staff. Uh, potentially difficult, difficulty in monitoring or enforcing mask policies for those who are not vaccinated in the absence of schools being able to conduct this monitoring. Universal masking is the best and most effective strategy to create consistent messages, expectations, enforcement, and compliance with that, without the added burden of needing to monitor vaccination status. Possibility of low vaccination uptake within the surrounding school community. Continued concerns for variants that are more easily spread among children, adolescents, and adults. An added benefit of universal masking is protection of students and staff against other respiratory illnesses that would take time away from school, some examples are influenza and strep throat. A summary of um, some of the prior updates from July twenty, July twenty first, twenty twenty one um, developed strategies that schools should be implemented by all schools. These are strategies that if not implemented, create conditions of high risk for COVID nineteen exposure and spread. NC DHHS strongly advises that school leaders adopt all the strategies in the school um, in the should sections. Um, and they revised um, the guidelines to emphasize the COVID nineteen prevention strategies most important for in-person learning for K through twelve schools, most importantly, promoting vaccinations and proper and consistent use of face coverings. So under clause face coverings in the should section for DHHS, all schools should require all children and staff in schools K through twelve um, to wear face coverings consistently when indoors. Schools K through twelve grade should make mask use universally required regardless of vaccination status, given that most of the student population in those grades are not yet eligible for vaccinations. And first CDC order um, require passengers and staff to wear face coverings on buses, vans, and other group school transportation. So it is, it is um, not anyway optional for transportation, it is a requirement on our school buses. Um, and there are exceptions to face coverings. Um, people um, should not wear a face covering if they have any medical or behavioral condition or disability, including but not limited to any person who has trouble breathing or is unconscious or incapacitated, or is otherwise unable to put on or remove the face covering without assistance, is under the age of two, is actively eating or drinking, is seeking to communicate with someone who is hearing impaired in a way that requires the mouth to be visible. And the final point that um, I want to bring out is um, in regards to being exposed to someone who is positive with COVID nineteen, uh, DHHS now does not recommend quarantining of students following exposures in school settings if masks were being worn appropriately and consistently by both the person with COVID nineteen and the potential exposed person. So what that means, if we have masking fully in place, then we will not be quarantining students if they are consistently wearing their mask um, as we have indicated. Um, and just an example of how many students we have sent home for our one month summer camp that we held. We had uh, eight positive COVID cases, which resulted in one hundred and forty five student exposures. So when you multiply that by ten days of quarantine, that's one thousand four hundred and fifty days of quarantine for the one hundred and forty five students with one month of instruction, and look at the valuable instruction that they um, lost. And finally, this statement from Doctor Duncan. She stated, the North Carolina Toolkit has been updated to reflect recommendations from CDC and North Carolina DHHS. Following these mitigation strategies will provide a safer environment for in-person learning. And that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Hello.
Did the Governor of North Carolina say it was mandated or recommended?
Um, it states should require.
Should. I wanted to make sure that exactly what-
It is leaving the decisions up to each LEA.
But, but the CDC and the doctors and the people who are professionals, who the governor is not, but the professionals say that we should wear them.
They are highly recommending it. Actually, the governor gets his guidance from CDC.
Right.
And um, I think that what they're trying to do is when a county gets five percent or below in positive cases, which we are a long ways from that, then we can start reducing some of the guidance and taking the mask off and things like that. You know, probably in the high nineties, I think, like ninety-eight counties now are red in North Carolina. So none of the counties are in good shape, but eventually we'll start coming out of this. Some counties may improve quicker than others, so they did not want to dictate statewide what everyone did. They wanted to leave the um, decisions up to each LEA. So like Doctor Atkinson said, we would reassess every month.
But Bladen County is a hot spot.
Yes, sir. We are red, critical sixteen point nine percent positivity rate.
Uh, let, let me just be clear on something. You said that if um, students were wearing their masks properly, and there was an exposure, we would not send the kids home.
That's right, Mr. Bureau, unless the, unless the student is symptomatic. And that, and what that means, just as an example, if you're COVID positive and you're wearing a mask and everyone's surrounding you within six feet, and they're wearing a mask, then they will not have to quarantine unless they develop symptoms.
And, and seeing that, that's the problem, I think, that, that um, is happening is most of the time, they're not wearing the mask properly. They're bringing it below their nose because they can't breathe. Um, it's aggravating to because they can't breathe. Um, you know, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I also understand too that um, it'd be one thing if they wore them properly, but a lot of times they're not. A lot of times when you go to talk, what you do, you pull it down. Um, so um, you know, I just want to make sure that that was-
The, the person that has COVID doesn't have to go home?
Yes, the, the, anybody with COVID positive, they-
That's the quarantine.
Quarantine.
But the people around them don't.
Um, students um, that are properly masked um, will not have to, now, now it does not apply to adults or extracurricular activities or athletics at this time because there's a lot of unmasking that goes home, that goes on, after-school events and things like that. Currently, it only applies to students in the school setting and bus transportation. But um, you know, the numbers are really high when we began in-person learning again um, with our last school year of quarantine students, and you know, that equates to, to lost work time, parents staying home with children, you know, just a lot of factors that I know you all are aware of.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Could you give me a comparison of the number of people who are, or a percentage, give me numbers or a percentage of the unvaccinated who got COVID and the vaccinated who got COVID?
I don't have a percentage rate, but I do know that the data shows that vaccinated individuals who um, get COVID, um, statistically are less likely to have severe illness and very high percent rate of not having to be hospitalized.
So y'all don't keep stats on those that are vaccinated? So you really, you really don't know.
Well, I-
You really don't know because you don't even keep stats on the vaccinated ones, so you don't know how it compares.
Well, at this point in time, it's not-
I mean, you can say it, but if you hadn't done any tests, I mean, we've been talking about that all day. If you hadn't done any tests, then you're just saying stuff.
I, I probably could find some information on-
I wish you would, because I don't think they're, I don't think they test on it. Y'all don't, nobody else does.
But um, our vaccinated-
What are the, the real numbers or percentages of COVID compared to other illnesses, such as we got sixteen percent getting COVID? And what, what percentage do we have getting other diseases that we have? Several others, four or five, picking any of them, I don't care. Also comparison, is it COVID lower or higher than those other diseases?
Well, currently now COVID is high, but in our community.
Is, but, well, I've been reading one hour, one, the fact saying it says other diseases are higher than actually than COVID.
Um, well, I base my information from CDC and North Carolina DHHS, and I know that we had very, very few flu cases last year, and they attributed that to universal masking.
Do you not think that maybe some of these things that have been classified as COVID may be flu?
Well, I mean, anything's possible, but if-
If hospital, if hospitals getting money for having a COVID, COVID case, and they're not getting federal dollars for COVID, and they're not for flu.
Oh, I don't know.
Saying that might affect it.
All I know is when we get a positive COVID case, we, we can have to get a report of it, and um, you know, if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine, and our staff members that are fully vaccinated, they provide us with a copy of their vaccine status card, so.
One more question, I'll speak through my question, yeah, I'll have a comment. How many, you mentioned your summer camp, and how many were sent home from the summer camp? How many of actually had COVID that were sent home for that summer camp? As far as we know, had COVID.
Uh, well, we had eight, we had eight positive confirmed cases of COVID that created the one hundred and forty-five being sent home, the exposures. And um, none of the um, exposures sent home developed COVID. We were not informed that any of them had tested positive.
Can you tell me the total number of COVID cases in Bladen County at present?
The total number of COVID cases, um, on DHHS website today, we currently, we have nine hundred and thirty-five cases per one hundred thousand residents in Bladen County. We have sixty-one deaths.
Nine hundred, for how many?
Nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty-five, I'm sorry, not, not nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. We have in a fourteen-day running period on North Carolina DHHS, and it was last updated August ninth. We have, Bladen County has nine hundred and thirty-five cases per one hundred thousand residents.
So we have thirty thousand or less people in Bladen County, so how, how many do we actually have? But we don't have a hundred thousand people in Bladen County.
They, they basically don't know, one hundred thousand.
Thirty, thirty thousand or less people in Bladen County.
Right.
So we, so it would actually be a whole lot less than that. I'd like to know how many Bladen County actually has, and then have it divided up into how many does each township have, so we'll actually know.
Doctor Duncan did send me a table.
I was hearing some information that Bladenboro was overrun with and given all kinds of percentages, and then in reality, when doing some research, there was maybe seven in Bladenboro altogether. I mean, the percentage is high, but the number was actually a low number.
And you can look on DHHS and you can look up a zip code, it can tell you the number of positives, but I do know, Mr. uh, Mr. Benton, that since COVID began in twenty twenty, Bladen County has three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight documented COVID positives.
And of course, that's going to keep going up, because you don't subtract, because you keep adding as time goes on.
Sixty-one deaths.
Can't erase them, so it's going to keep, that number is going to always go up. I think that's all my questions, so just one of the, the statement that I'd like to make. I think to be fair, Dr. Rex, and that we need someone to talk to us that has a different perspective. To be fair, because everybody doesn't think the same, and I know there's folks here that are already or are curt, smoking and breathing. Don't like, don't like me asking all these questions, but there's a lot of people out there who have these questions, not just me.
Who would you get to get a different perspective?
I don't care who it is. As long as they have a different perspective.
But you want a different perspective.
Well, that's, that's just like asking some other questions. What are we going to do about certain things? Well, what are we going to do? If you're going to make me give the answer to every question I ask, then you can't ask any questions either that you don't have to answer to.
No, what I'm saying, who, who's going to get to get a different perspective?
I don't know, I'm sure somebody, well, you got a little different one from me tonight, just with my questioning. But I think we need somebody to stand up there and give us a different perspective.
Mr. Dennis has got a statement.
Okay, I mean, I, I feel like we do have a model. If you've talked with Ms. Duncan, has she shared with you what MRO is doing and how many positive cases they've had? I think they have been at school for a week. I mean, have we seen, or has she shared that a vast majority of them kids have been quarantined, sent out, or anything like that?
Um.
They don't have a mask mandate, correct?
That's correct.
And what I know, and they're doing social distancing, and I don't know exactly what they're doing on the bus, but we do have a model. That's factual information.
Right, um, and she has not shared with me the number of, of positive cases.
Very important for us to know, I wish.
I don't know that she could share that with you, but, but anyway, um, um, I do know that I, I received a phone call today from a parent um, of, uh, parent has children at MRO and, and um, her children have been exposed because of some positive cases, and I don't know how many, so.
Any more questions?
I do have, if the board likes, I do have our, I fool our regions who have already made decisions, I could share that with the board if you'd like to hear other, what other districts have done at this point. Um, I have our, our RISA and as well as other surrounding counties that are not part of our RISA, if that's something the board would like to hear.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Make a motion.
Motion for uh, D, with the mandated mask in the hallway.
I have a motion on the floor, or um, Adam D with adding to it, uh, mask- Adam D with adding to it, uh, mask in the hallways. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Um, any discussion, we're open for discussion here.
Let's take the, uh, wording that motion.
Would, would you, would you read the first part and then add that please, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, masks would be strongly encouraged for students and staff, but not required. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus and you would add or in the hallways.
Can't we leave that? D is D and make that one, because that's a whole nother one, make that E option, that way we still have option D.
We could, we could do that, that's part of the motion.
I mean, I, I would be fair to make it motion E, I mean.
Oh, how we jumped, how we just jumped to option D?
Say that again.
How we just jumped to option D?
Because he made a motion, he, he made a motion, it's a motion, we're in, he made a motion and we have a second on the motion.
So you could, so you could, so you can choose, you can choose any option that you want, as long as you got the motion.
You can choose, if you want to make that a motion, but the board's got to approve it. If the board votes it down, then you can come back with another motion.
When we started option A. Get a motion on that.
He made his motion first, he had the floor. But now, do we want to get?
We got the vote on his motion if you go. Motion and a second.
We got a motion and a second would be a dendum.
I just threw mine in as part of the discussion, but I mean, we got the vote on his motion, I'd like to make.
Any more discussion? This big day.
You re- reread his motion again, as we're voting on.
The motion on the floor to discuss at this time is.
As will be considered, but uh, masks should be strongly encouraged for students and staff, but not required. All students and staff would be required to wear a mask when riding a bus or in the hallways. And in, and in hallways.
And in hallways, yes.
And the motion is though to make that, all of that, option B.
D, that's D. It's, it's open for discussion. Mr. Singleton, it's open for discussion.
I wanna go to option A myself.
Well, we got uh, option D on, on the table right this minute. If there's no more discussion, I'll call the order and we'll vote, uh, Ms. Valerius.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote, Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton.
Nay.
Gary Roda. Vincent Roscher.
Nay.
Cory Singletonary.
Nay.
Alan West. Glenn McCoy.
Nay.
Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have four guesses and five notes.
That motion failed, let it be noted.
I move if it's proper that we accept. Uh, A, option A.
We have a motion on the floor to accept, Adam A, would you please read that, Dr. Axon?
Yes, sir. Masks would be required for all students and staff regardless of their vaccination status. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. Specific guidelines will be developed to govern mask and COVID nineteen protocols for athletics. Because the NCHSA has, excuse me, NC HSAA has not, um, given that to districts, so we are all for that. All students and staff would be required to wear a mask when riding a bus, this option would be reviewed on a monthly basis.
I have a motion by Mr. McCoy, do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Vince Roscher. A second, I'm sorry, um, any discussion?
Will athletics be separate from this, I mean, is that a separate? Um, ruling we gotta come up with or?
We would have to look at, um, at if athleticism versus not playing, so would they wear masks on sidelines to play and not?
So I mean, I guess athletics didn't contain to this option A.
Correct, that's right, we're gonna have to.
So we're about to develop a whole new thing.
Right, we would have to do that, the NCHSA has not sent guidance to districts now, right now, they've kind of put you on your own. At this point, their stance is they're not issuing guidance to LEAs because everyone was deciding on masking, so they're leaving up to the LEA. To then develop guidelines for athletics, obviously, we had to have this taken care of before we could move forward in what those would be.
And.
Now, they're, they're doing practices right now. Um, I mean, we need to get something done pretty quick.
At this point, we've asked him to.
See, we got, we got, um, jamborees.
Right.
All this week, so.
And everything, and what I've read, um, with, even with traveling is that when you're, when you are the away team, you follow the guidance of the team you're going to play at their home. So I, whatever we said, anyone that would come to Bladen would have to follow Bladen's rules when they're on our fields or in our gyms. So, um, we have, we have instructed schools, even like today, we had laptop, we've instructed schools to continue to follow the most current guidance until a decision is made, so. Uh, we all agree we'd have to come up with something relatively quickly, so that would be, uh, Ms. Brown and Dr. Heaven Ridge would work with our athletic directors. Uh, to develop that guidance for athletics. Obviously, we share that with you all.
And, uh, the only thing I'd like to say is, it's, um, I just think that we need to. Uh, yeah, personally, I, I don't like the, the fact that they wear them the whole time. Uh, again, I think that they would be protected in the closed sessions, that they were like on the bus and in the hallways. But now we're asking our teachers. To not only teach and help our kids to catch up. From where they're behind, but now they got to monitor whether or not you got your mask on, and I'm afraid that what's gonna happen. Is if somebody comes down with COVID and. They have their mask on and it goes back to the question I asked, you know, sure, you're gonna go ask somebody, did you wear your mask properly? Why don't you say they're gonna tell you? Yeah, I did, but. Uh, again, um, I just think we're asking a lot of our teachers and, um.
Mr. Carroll.
Go ahead.
What are our classrooms, uh, I mean, we got thirty students in class, they're gonna sit there for ninety, ain't it? And we don't really have that social distance.
It don't matter if you wear a mask or not.
You, you, you know, it, it, it goes back, again, the, you know. It doesn't matter because they're, they're together, the kids are together anyhow. All summer they've been together, they've been in classrooms together, but what I'm just saying is we're asking. For the teachers to have to sit there and be teaching the class, and Johnny pulls his mask out, she's gonna have to stop him, so you got to pull your mask out. How many times a day you think she's gonna say that?
I don't, I don't, I don't even know if the child take his mask off, you know?
Uh, trust me, they do, they, they sure do.
They did.
That, it, it got towards, they, they fought that thing.
I'm just saying, we, we can look for that, but we don't know how much is gonna happen and not serious. I mean, I think, I think this stuff is getting really serious, I just think that by what I see on. I, 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 I'll take it serious.
I take it as serious as anybody else in this room takes it. I, I, I really do.
He's got more information than the governor, but if he's not gonna mandate, he's putting it off on other people. The governor has all these people, you know, reporting to him.
He's got the best of the.
He's got the best of the best, way better than we have sitting in this state. I'm trying to follow in his path.
Any more discussion? I call the worker. Ms. Valerius.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote, Chris Clark.
Nay.
Dennis Edwards.
Nay.
Tim Benton.
Nay.
Gary Roda.
Yes.
Vincent Roscher.
Yes.
Cory Singletonary.
Nay.
Alan West. Roger Carroll.
No.
Mr. Chairman. Five notes and four guesses.
This one failed.
I moved that we accept option D.
Re, re.
Can. They, D.
We voted on D, we voted, that was he.
He voted to change D.
Let's have him read it what you want.
He voted to change D by adding.
And a then.
Wear their mask on the bus and in the hallway, we hadn't voted on D.
But you don't want the hallway.
That's right. And it failed, it failed, so therefore D remained the same, so we didn't vote on option D, we voted on changing option D. You can't have to wear a mask.
Let's have the reading on it one more time.
Alright, so this is D without the hallway clause. Mask would be strongly encouraged for students and staff, but not required. All students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus.
I like the word optional, give the parents the opportunity to decide what they do with their children. That's what they want.
Is that your motion for D?
Motion is for D, yes, sir. I have, um.
Are we legal to do that?
No, because we already voted down D. Doesn't mean you can go back and vote on it again, just because you changed the wording on it, don't, we already voted it down.
They didn't change.
The wording, the word, the wording is still the same.
Tried to change.
The only thing that you changed was you were at the end, the wording at the beginning is still the same.
He had a wording for D, it's still the same, it didn't change it.
That's why, that's why we need, that's why we need an attorney here.
We need, we need a.
And, and, and what, and, and? I don't know how that rose. You can't, if you don't know, you can't even vote on it.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. I think if anything was illegal, it may have been trying to amend it. I think if you vote on the wording that's in the, um.
Now, I think you can amend it, we did that right, that was correct. The amendment.
And if it don't pass, it remains the same. You had to go, all that would have done was voted to change option D, then we'd have had to vote on option D the way it was changed. It didn't get changed, and we didn't vote on it the way originally, the way it still is, originally was and still is.
Uh, Gary's, that was sick.
No, I mean, you got a motion and a second, I voted. Take it, go. I'm voting the second, I'm voting the second.
I got a motion and a second, and if it's wrong, we'll discuss it with Gary. That's what we'll. No, we need to, we need to discuss it with Gary right now. No, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna wait to discuss it five days with Gary. We need somebody right now to discuss, so we get this thing straight right now. We're not gonna wait one or two weeks to discuss it with Gary, no, we need to discuss it right now. We need to discuss it right now.
And if it's wrong, then what we'll do, we'll amend it and we'll go back to square one.
But we, but we won't be back here until next month, we need to get somebody on the phone right now to discuss this right now. If they text us all night. You need to get somebody on the phone.
Well, if we do that, we could have a special meeting to come back.
That, that, we'll vote on it, and then if, if it's wrong, we'll call a special meeting and we'll come back and we'll straighten it out.
Okay, we call a special meeting to come back.
Well, we can do it right now. Because we got a motion and a, and a second on the floor, we got a motion on the floor. You, you let that motion and second come through Roger, Mr. Carroll, come on now, call Mr. Grant. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, all, I'm Dr. Thomas and, um, I have attended parliamentary trainings. The first motion that was voted on was amended, so if you choose to vote on D again, you should be able to do that because it wasn't amended.
Thank you, ma'am.
I apologize for that.
I thank you for your help and your guidance. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion?
Call Gary Grant.
I yield to you, um, Ms. Valerius.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote, Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Gary Roda.
Nay.
Vincent Roscher.
No.
Cory Singletonary.
Nay.
Alan West. Glenn McCoy.
Nay.
Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have five guesses and four notes.
As of now, um, D stands, has passed. Dr. Axon.
Action out of ten point zero two, uh, at the last board meeting, a question was asked concerning, uh, the board. And any actions that would be taken, has taken place or have been taking place or any guidance by the School Board Association regarding House Bill three twenty-four. Ensuring dignity and non-discrimination in schools, I did reach out to the North Carolina School Board Association. To see if any work had been done on that in relation to any resolutions, any sample policies or any other guidance for school boards. They did inform me at that time that they have not taken a position at this time, uh, or provided any guidance from the School Board Association because it is pending legislation. In that, they were looking at it closely and monitoring to see what was going to happen with that. They did share with me that three districts have either adopted or modified either a policy or either a resolution. Uh, I do have copies, I did share that with the board of what those districts had done. Uh, as it relates to House Bill three twenty-four, three districts include Moore County Schools who actually created a policy. Three zero nine zero for ensuring dignity and non-discrimination in schools. Rosewood County amended their policy seventy-seven twenty, employee political activities, uh, with, um. Some language specific to House Bill three twenty-four. And then Cabarrus County did a board resolution to ensure dignity and non-discrimination in schools. I was asked to bring this back to the board tonight to see if there's any action that the board would like to take if this is done.
Play ground the board.
I would like to, um. Follow in the lines of the county on their resolution and take one into place, I would like a motion for it.
What is that resolution, you say, what is their resolution?
I don't have my computer in front of me, but it's to, uh, not discriminate or. Anything against any student in your, uh, district. Make sure it's, uh, equal and open environment.
Well, you should be good to agree with it, correct?
Well, why do we have to vote on it when we already know the situation?
I made a motion, we could let, let them.
So you ain't talking about what your motion is, man? You talking about something that.
Did you get the email that the guidelines?
And you talking about something that the Gaboris County did, I don't know what they did.
You didn't read your email, did you?
No, I don't know what Gaboris.
Okay, I thought you'd read about it, I'm sorry.
I don't know what Gaboris County did. What did they do?
Miss Axon. You have that email, you can read to him.
I have a copy.
You need some concrete.
Yeah, I have a copy and these, this is, if we did email, I can actually, I can read the resolution that Cabarrus did if you all would like for me to.
Yes, please.
Okay. Alright. Um, this was adopted on the twelfth of July by the Cabarrus Board of Education. It says, uh, resolution to ensure dignity and non-discrimination in schools. It says, whereas pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C forty-seven, the Cabarrus County Board of Education, the school board referenced the following. Is empowered and has the duty to provide students with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education. And to make all policy decisions with that objective in mind and. Whereas policies are a means by which the school board expresses its vision for the school district. In formulating specific policies, the school board is guided by. and formulate specific policies, the school board is guided by its duty to provide students with the opportunity to receive a sound basic education as further guided by governing principles, it considers critical to meet that obligation by providing a system of excellent schools where students can succeed, and whereas the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction adopts standards while local school boards adopt curriculum, and whereas the Cabarrus County School System, including the teachers, administrators, and all school employees are a dynamic educational team in partnership with our entire community to prepare all students with the knowledge and skills necessary to become successful, responsible, contributing citizens by providing a caring, disciplined, world-class learning center which challenges students and staff to perform to their potential in the changing competitive world, and whereas the Cabarrus County School Board of Education recognizes the importance of diversity of backgrounds, opinions, and expression, and it's uh, as foundational to providing students with the opportunity to receive a sound basic education, and whereas the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education is dedicated to providing each student educational opportunities that respect the dignity of others, acknowledge the right of others to express differing opinions and foster and defend intellectual honesty, freedom of inquiry and instruction, and freedom of speech and association. And whereas the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education recognizes and promotes the equality and rights of all persons as found in the North Carolina Constitution and United States Constitution, and whereas it is the intent of the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education to uphold the laws of the land and specifically encourage the Cabarrus County students to learn that all persons are created equally, that no person or sex is inherently superior to another, and that no individual by virtue of his, his or her race or sex is inherently racist. Now therefore, be it resolved by a vote of the members of the Cabarrus County Board of Education at the duly called meeting held on July twelve, twenty twenty-one, the Cabarrus County School Board and Cabarrus County School District, for the aforementioned reasons, will promote one, that one race or sex is not inherently superior to another race or sex. Two, that an individual solely by virtue of his race or her race or sex is not inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive. Three, that an individual should not be discriminated against or take adverse treatment solely or partly because of his or her race or sex. Four, that an individual's moral character is not determined by his or her race or sex. Five, that no individual solely by virtue of his or her race or sex bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the race or sex. Six, that no individual solely by virtue of his or her race or sex should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress. And seven, that the United States comprises of persons that are all created equally and is adopted the twelfth day of July twenty twenty-one by the Cabarrus County Board of Education.
And all board members received that email, right?
I'll second the motion just so we can just.
I have a.
Discussion on.
I have a motion by Mr. Dennis Edwards to accept this resolution, and a second by Mr. Tim Benton, we're now open for discussion.
Why do we have, Mr.? Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Edwards, why, why are you so against critical race theory from the start with?
That's.
Not, not only you, not only you, but I want to know from everybody on this board.
That's my personal opinion.
Do you care if your children know the real history, Mr. Edwards?
My personal opinion, Mr. Edwards.
But I mean, the people would like to know, Mr. Edwards.
I've never watched that, but.
Everybody don't know your thing, I would like to hear it myself.
I'm representing many people from this county.
Well, we need.
But you can't express your opinion, though. I express mine all the time.
I've seen it several times.
Yes, I know, and I'm not scared to express my opinion, but I think everybody in this county, you so against critical race theory, you need to speak about it.
Well, evidently, several counties and you have several.
We have three.
I'm not worried about every other county, I want you to speak about it, because I want to know how you feel.
I disagree with, I mean, that's my, that's how I feel, I disagree.
You disagree, but you don't have, you don't have any type of.
Cost their opinion.
Miss, miss, he's made a statement, Mr. Single Terry will move on. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Nah, it, it, that, that shouldn't, that should not be accepted. Cause you.
It, it should be, it's.
No, 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 it's not. No, sir.
Yes, it is.
Just good, so, 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 all that.
For somebody in.
That's my opinion, and they don't give no explanation. They don't know no explanation.
I call the order, I call the order, Mr. Benton has the floor, please.
I mean, I, I wasn't speak, I wasn't finished speaking from the start with, Mr. Carroll, but go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Benton.
Who do I need to ask? Uh, someone in curriculum, I guess?
Who's in George's curriculum?
Let me sure watch me, uh, is there anything about critical race theory in our standards that we have coming down from the state at this time?
Yes, sir, it is mentioned. It's in one standard, starting in fourth grade.
And that is also included in the unpacked standards?
It will be included in the unpack, and we're gonna do lots of training around those standards.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to know, uh, where, where, uh, some people don't want to know the real history. You know, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't learn about the Tulsa riots until I got to college. And, and, and the Wilmington riots also, why do you don't want to know about the real history?
I knew about those things in middle school.
I didn't. I didn't, Mr. Carroll.
I went to Blainburg school, we had good teachers, great, good press. Tell us, teach.
I, I just.
And it's, and it's a lot more things went on Blainburg besides good teachers. That's why we at this point right here, talking about critical race theory. Cause I have family that went, that went through segregation at Blainburg High School, and they told me how it was. But no, I, I don't discriminate on any child, but we need to discuss this right here, so we can move on, move forward. And critical race theory needs to be taught in Blain, in Blading County schools.
My question, I ask my question, I'm too.
I just like to know why, why, why we don't want it.
Well, if, 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 if the board don't want it, they'll vote it down.
I, I just like to know why.
Let's go. Yes, DPI has some good information coming out to us.
Can you, Mr.?
DPI, DPI, uh, information is coming out, good, that'll be great. That's gonna be a part of your school curriculums. Hopefully. It helps schools around state board of education have given us new instruction, and it should be coming out to us. If that's what you refer to, Ms. White Smith?
Yes, sir, Dr. Rakers and I were just discussing, they have removed that terminology.
Yeah, there was a revision on that side. What, we're gonna make critical race theory, she just.
Mr. Benton?
Have they removed those words from the standards, but reworded it, and they're still gonna teach critical race theory? Well, you can say anything, any way you want to say it. And so, state's real good at it, we know about governments.
We'll be doing training on the standards and unpacking, using the unpacking documents to guide, and we're getting regional support. Um, we have a social studies committee that's been working on these standards too. So our region's working on them to clarify them, and we're doing the unpacking. Which clarify, how to teach the standard.
Any more discussions? I call the order. Ms. Valeris?
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark? Dennis Edwards? Tim Benton? Gary Rota? Vincent Roscher? Cory Single Terry?
Nay.
Alan West? Glenn McCoy?
Nay.
Roger Carroll? Mr. Chairman, you have five guesses and four nays.
If so passes. Um, I need a motion to bring spring custom policy off the table. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Vince, second by Mr. McCoy, any discussion? Ms. Valeris?
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark? Dennis Edwards? Tim Benton? Gary Rota? Vincent Roscher? Cory Single Terry?
What we voting on?
Bring the spring custom policy off the table.
Nay.
Alan West? Glenn McCoy? Roger Carroll? Mr. Chairman, you have eight guesses and one nay.
Uh, Dr. Rakers.
Well, as I request that you approve the spring custom policy updates from the North Carolina School Board Association.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion to accept the spring unaccustomed policy by Mr. Vince, just second by Mr. McCoy, any discussion? Ms. Valeris?
Chris Clark? Dennis Edwards? Tim Benton? Gary Rota? Vincent Roscher? Cory Single Terry? Alan West? Glenn McCoy? Roger Carroll? Mr. Chairman, you have nine guesses.